It's nine o'clock. We will call the meeting of Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to a halt. We will follow the open meeting if it is amended and a copy of which is posted at the entry of the room. We may take items out of order for the convenience of the public and have a good right to go into a closed session to discuss any item that we may need to. In the past, we've not approved the agenda. I'm going to make an exception today because there's one item that we need to move up. So I'm going to, unless there's a reason not to, move item number seven, which is the Woodruff Administrative Subdivision. Move that up to a 920 item. Does that work? Was Peggy going to be in or anything? Okay. And I think that Commissioner Wimmer needs to be going for just a couple of minutes, so I want to make sure we've got three for a vote on that. That will be preceding the item number five, the update on the green lights for veterans. Having said that, we'll also be meeting at 9:15 as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, again, following the Open Meetings Act is amended. And our first order of business is prayer. I think that Commissioner Burns was up, but I'm going to offer prayer for him if you would join me, please. Dear heavenly Father, we just thank you for the many blessings that we have around this table. That, for the harvest, for the moisture we've had. We ask that always that you keep those in mind that are less fortunate than ourselves. You keep our first responders and our military men and women around the world close to you. That protect these many rights that we have. We pray for a meaningful meeting and we pray these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Entertained a motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held October 28th.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Commissioner meeting held October 28th, 2024.
Second.
Now that we have a motion and a second, is any discussion, questions, corrections? If not, roll call, vote, please.
Aye.
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 Aye. Next item is our treasures, I mean, claims and treasures receipts. If we had a chance to review those, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve those claims and treasures receipts as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second, discussion. Roll call, Tammy.
Aye.
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 Aye. The next item is to receive and order file of the final report of distress warrants issued by the Lincoln County, by the county treasurer. I'd entertain a motion on that.
It would be my motion to receive and order file the final report of distress warrants issued in Lincoln County by the county treasurer. With a balance note to collect sixty-nine thousand eight eight nine fifty-five cents.
Second.
Motion and a second. Yeah, I'm probably wrong, or I have been before, but that seems like that's a larger outstanding balance that we've had on distress warrants in the past, isn't it?
I don't recall, truthfully, whether it's high or low. I looked through it this morning and I didn't see a lot of huge amounts. There's a lot of individuals.
Lot of individuals.
But there are a lot of hundred and fifteen and two hundred dollars and, you know, five hundred is kind of an outlier.
Yeah.
I mean, just a lot of them, but they're fairly low amounts.
Uh huh.
Looks like folks just ignored certain payment deadlines or something, I don't know. But I know, I know one is on the stake, so I know the individual whose name's on it, he's passed away for a couple of years, so.
I see one here, I think it was either fifty-four or fifty-five and sixteen thousand seven something, but it looks like, if I'm not mistaken, that might have been paid October 29th, '24. So just got paid.
There's a couple of them on here that are stamped "Paid," yeah.
Also, as a reminder, Chair, we all have to sign this.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call, vote.
Weems.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Morning.
Good morning.
Where's this new guy at?
We'll see how it goes.
Yeah. Oh. Oh, jeez.
It's in my mind.
Stuck in your brain?
Absolutely, exactly what happened. I think, which is very unusual, you have some kind of a post or something passed through there. Get it or something. Thank you, sir. We haven't seen that name before. If I have, I don't recall it. I haven't either. Not a big deal. But if you talk, you know, on the invoice, it just says, June. That's the item that's with the number. Just de-chase.
Okay, that's where their grand island, is that where grand island? Oh, that's where the eeks is at, okay.
You don't know it? And again, not a big deal. I always saw it for a hot tub or something and there's no way to know.
I wouldn't know.
Mr. Johnson, let me know why you hit the overtime. So I'm coming, I'll kind of go around there and say, hi, and he gets started, but I'm not getting by this guy.
That's pretty neat, huh?
This is broad.
We're not surprised.
Does the, we have a two-fifties credit card for the department out there.
I know they use a card for fuel, yeah?
No.
I can ask, Todd's sitting right over there.
Not, not a big deal, you know, we don't have to use our personal ones. Have them instead of being trouble. I mean, I'm not saying that is, because you turned it in.
These are old ones that you guys approved in the past, so they're on there. Judy, can you take that with somebody?
Nine fifteen, the next agenda item is to meet as Lincoln County Board of Equalization. So at nine fifteen, we will recess as Lincoln County Board, convene as Lincoln County Board of Equalization. Again, following the Open Meetings Act is amended, a copy of which is posted at the entry of the room. First order of business is to approve the minutes of the Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held October 28th, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve those minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held on October 28th, 2024.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please, Tammy.
Woodruff. Weems.
Aye.
Wimmer.
Aye.
Hughley.
Next item is certificate of correction and refund is submitted by the county assessor. I see none. Okay. Anything else to come before the Board of Equalization? If not, we will adjourn as Lincoln County Board of Equalization at nine sixteen and reconvene as Lincoln County Board of Commissioners.
Thanks, Julie.
We have no number sixteen.
I'm not surprised.
Okay, just noting that for you. No number sixteen. So we went from fifty-nine to sixty-one. Should I write it on top of the thing?
No, you're supposed to put it on there. Thank you.
Sir.
I saw that email.
We just keep coming in. I mean, we just paid a pretty sizable amount there. But nobody's, nobody's seen enough that are addressed inland port. I would think that they would at least let us know that there's more work being done out there.
It's nine twenty. We will now take item number seven, which we moved up. And that is discuss consideration on an application by Jerry and Peggy Woodruff for Woodruff Second Administrative Subdivision. Located at eighty-two eighteen Moran Road in an A1 agricultural district on property described as lots one and two Woodruff Administrative Subdivision of Lincoln County, Nebraska. Good morning, young lady.
Good morning. Judy Clark, Lincoln County Planning Administrator. So what you should have is a copy of the preliminary and the final plat and then also a couple of location maps in case you didn't know exactly where this property is at. The lots do exist currently, so essentially this is just reconfiguring to existing lots. We're not creating a new lot. The purpose of the reconfiguration is to just set property lines to follow the existing tree lines. Planning staff has no objection to the subdivision. The subdivision is in conformance with the Lincoln County Comprehensive Plan and zoning regulations. I'll take any questions if you happen to have them.
Judy, what exactly, where are we changing?
So on that preliminary, there's a very, very small dashed line just north of lot two. So that little, I don't even know, trapezoid shape that you see there. That was the existing.
Oh, I see it now, thank you.
Lot line, and so we've moved that one.
Okay, it was so small I didn't even see it, so thank you.
Yeah, it's a, it's a very, very minor change.
Okay.
Okay. Chairman, you ready for motion?
Yes, sir.
It would be my motion to approve Woodruff Second Administrative Subdivision as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
Weems.
Aye.
Wimmer.
Hi.
Woodruff. Does he just have to say his name? Ann Hughley.
Aye. Okay, let's follow up with an update on green lights for veterans. And then we'll have an update on Dr. Betcher and Apex District.
Very good. I asked for the green light for veteran topic to be put on the agenda just to remind everyone that today is the day that we begin our green light for veterans initiative that was rolled out by National NACO. Their request was that we light up our courthouses, residential's, businesses with a green light from November fourth through November eleventh. Lincoln County is actually going to do it through the entire month of November because we want to send a very strong message to our county veterans that we appreciate their service, their sacrifice, and their dedication. So that's just a quick reminder to our community to show your support, burn a green light at the entrance of your home or your business, at least for the next week.
An update on the next item.
Tom, do you want to give the update on?
Honoring Dr. Betcher in Apex District.
I'm here, I'll sign.
I wanted to show, I know you guys all can't make it.
So while Tom's signing in, I'll just give a quick update. Dr. Betcher has been generously working with our Veterans Service Office and Tom's Board to do some dental work for some local veterans. As you all know, we have a hard time finding dentists in our area that are in-network if you're insured. And for our veterans, it's even more challenging, so. The Veterans Service Committee, Tom.
We had this plaque made, just wanted to show you guys on behalf of the county and Dr. Betcher and the staff.
Nice.
I'm also going to give them each a county coin.
Nice.
Thanks.
We have this made. Very nice.
The gentleman that makes, made the plaque is also a Lincoln County veteran who has a business here in North Platte.
Yes. So I want to thank the commissioners again for the support of the Veterans Office. This is, this is the kind of stuff that's fun to do. Thank the community and the people supporting the veterans. And Dr. Betcher's office has done a lot. I've sent a lot of veterans and they've done a lot of good work. So again, if there's anything, questions or nothing, I just, I just really wanted to show the commissioners the plaque that was made for them.
Tom, did, did Dr. Betcher work with other local dentists also to have them?
We are working, yep, so, good question. So we are going to start working with some other dentist offices as well. So we were, the W-9, we'll get like what they call the W-9 form. And then I want to say Phelps Dentistry is starting to work with us, for sure. I want to say Phelps Dentistry is starting to work with us, for sure. We're going to reach out to Maple Park and some other dentists to do that, yes, we are.
Good. I was going to say, because I'm sure there are other people that may
Yes.
have an interest also, so.
So when Tom came to me and let me know that the Veteran Service Office and his Board of Directors was doing this award ceremony today, I invited them to come in and do it here in our chambers. But the scheduler at Apex Dentistry, Dr. Betcher's office, said they're, they're very busy, and they wanted all of their staff to be able to participate in the ceremony today. So we are taking it to their office at ten o'clock, so.
Ten o'clock, yes. What, what attracted me to Dr. Betcher's, to start it off, I, what Dr. Betcher's office has is, what I grabbed onto was, they only charge twenty-five dollars for a full exam, x-rays, everything. So I thought that was pretty, very inexpensive for a full exam, x-rays included. So that's, that's what led me go, and I met with the office manager there, and it's been, it's been a great relationship ever since.
Sure, and extend our thanks to.
I certainly will. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
We're working as quick as we can on that green banner thing because Casey being out of the country for like two, three weeks. Meeting now is December, November the sixth or something. I'm good, got all the players signed up to be there.
My request would just be that if, if somebody is sending somebody to do work out there, could we have a heads up?
She's doing it now. Let's see if we can get a written schedule, what, no, things they have scheduled, you know, what it might be for the next year. It's nine thirty. Our next agenda item is to have a public hearing on an amendment application. Application submitted by Pals Brewing Company LLC on a Class C liquor license. So, having said that, I think we had something in our folder, and I will open the public hearing at this time. If there's anyone that would wish to make comment, please come up, sign in, and we'd be glad to listen to any comments that you might have. We'll hold this open for just a few minutes or until somebody comes up. If they don't, we'll move on and take the actions we need to do.
Chairman Hughley, this is kind of a weird, weird one. But they do these, all these liquor licenses online now through this portal. I mean, I think he just simply was adding the trailer, is that right? To the application.
Paul, you want to come on up, please?
Paul Ottinger, eight oh four Cedar Berry Road, North Platte, Pals Brewing Company.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning, sir.
So, two things that we want to do with this application is, one, we would like to sell Crowler cans out of the trailer, the coffee trailer, so if someone wanted to come by for lunch and pick up beer to take home for the evening, and possibly in the future, possibly having it open in the evening, they wouldn't actually have to come in the building to grab their Crowler cans. We could have those, and they could just drive up. We hand them out the window to them, they pay and take off. And the other part is that we did add three thousand square feet on the back of the building that we will occasionally be using as an event space, and we wanted to make sure that that was updated on our license.
I would assume, Paul, that when you guys originally planned for your license, it was just for the single building, and since you've expanded, is that a requirement?
Yeah, every year I've, I've tried to keep it up to date with an updated drawing as we added on here and added on there, and last year we added the four acres to the north so we could have events over there and not have to do S D Ls every time. So, yeah, originally it was just the, the building and a small area outside for consumption in the beer garden.
Okay.
Did you, did you present this drawing, Paul? Is this your endiwork?
Yeah.
Okay, my question then would be, the highlighted yellow?
Uh huh.
That is the controlled area, is that correct?
Yeah, that area over to the, that area to the south.
This would be the south?
Yeah, I wasn't sure what to do with that with the state because, you know, we have the Harvest Host Parkers that park over there, and you know they're going to take cans of beer back to their camper. And I'm like, well, it's fenced in, we don't sell anything over there.
That, that was my question.
We don't sell anything over there.
Yes.
I questioned whether I should even add it.
I don't know the answer to that, but I was just wondering about the controlled access and make, you know, oversight. Here's what. You want me to question, because the portion that's not in yellow, I mean, that's your parking lot.
Yes.
So where this isn't contiguous, I was just curious how you police that up, if there's a need.
It's so quiet over there, people are inside their campers. There's not really much to patrol, quite frankly.
But this is portion, this is a portion of your amended application?
Yep.
Okay.
Have you ever gone by there and looked at it in the evening, Ken?
Not since you added camping, I don't believe.
Well, it's not really camping, it's parking. It's like the Walmart parking lot where someone pulls up their camper and parks it for the night. I wouldn't really call it camping. We don't, we don't have fires, we don't have hookups, we don't have anything like that.
Just a, just a.
Yeah, it's, it's really parking, honestly, is what it is, but they are overnight parking, so there is.
They'd be inside of your compound, then?
Yeah, they are.
You've got your controlled gate at the front on the county road.
I mean, yeah, they're, they're definitely on our property, no question. No question.
That's, that's more.
But I would consider it separate from the parking lot where we don't want any consumption happening.
Right.
You know, it's kind of a separate area, it's fenced in.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
I think so, yeah.
In your experience with filing applications, if the state has questions, they'll call and ask you for verification too?
Yep, they did call and ask me, and then I answered their question, and they said, okay. They said, I do have to ask someone some question about the drive-through, and they never got back to me, so I assume they got their questions answered and they were fine with it.
We don't. This is, everything's done online now, so this is very, I mean, this is a strange one, they told us we didn't even have to advertise the public hearing, we just had to have a public hearing, and you guys have nothing to sign. You may or may not give a recommendation, and then we just have to put it in the portal.
I was surprised at the process, quite frankly, when you already have an existing license and you're, especially the adding out of the building, that one caught me off guard a little bit where they were like, well, you, you have to get approval for that, I'm like, really?
Yeah, but that, that one's been around a long time. The only reason I say that is because some, well, it has been around.
Yeah. I, I, I was just surprised that I, I can't extend my taproom and, and not have to go back to a public hearing? I thought that was odd.
Can I ask a question of law enforcement? Do you guys have any concerns with the drive-through?
No, drive-throughs are legal all over Nebraska, I don't know why this would be an exception. They started that during COVID time, and it's been a thing ever since. And it's never shown to be a problem for anybody.
And we're not doing glasses of beer out of there.
Just, just cans?
Yeah, they'd be the full cans, no different than if you walked out of the building with it.
And your people that work in the coffee building are trained in the
Yep.
ID and all of that control.
Yep.
Okay, very good, thank you.
And then ours would be a recommendation, correct, to the liquor licenses, is that right?
I think that's what the clerk says.
Ours is a recommendation to the liquor.
Correct, from my understanding.
Ready, Chairman? Anyone else wishing to speak at a public hearing?
Chairman, do we, do we acknowledge a copy of the application into the record?
So, we're, the public portion of the public hearing is closed. It'll be discussed amongst the board now, Commissioner Williams, you had a good point, so. I think what I will do, right, wrong, or different, yeah, thank you. I will acknowledge the receipt of liquor, or Nebraska Liquor Control Application. And it says somewhere on here, amendment application for the reconstruction to the licensed area. It consists of four pages, including a sketch of the property. It has been submitted, we've heard from the owner of the property. Any questions that you might have, or?
You might note to Chairman that it's file number four four one four nine.
Appreciate it, thank you. I will note that, forty-four one forty-nine is the file number, I appreciate that, thanks, Ken. If not, I entertain a motion. Mr. Chairman, I would move that we recommend for approval the amended application submitted by Pals Brewing Company LLC on the Class C liquor license.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Rule call, Kammy, please. Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ken.
We'll get it put in the portal, Paul, so you can see it.
Thank you.
Yes, just for the record, you guys will never get an original now. They will all be done, everything has to be done through this portal, always.
Good.
It's very different.
So that means there will never be anything for us to sign?
That's my understanding. This all happens kind of through the summer, so.
Mr. Chairman, it is nine forty, may I be excused?
You may be.
Kammy, I will text you to see if the meeting's still going or we're done. Thank you.
Actually, I might have needed to put that up to a vote, I don't know.
I'm, I'm sure they'd all approve of my leaving. Thanks. Okay. I was wondering, we had to have a public hearing, but we didn't have a public.
Yeah, that doesn't make any sense, does it?
It makes no sense.
I wonder what, if we could get like a, what's it take to get an automobile sales license? As many cars as we've been buying and selling. Maybe we could take, save some of that haircut and do it through the county, would that work?
I'm not sure, it doesn't make any profit, does it?
I had a couple of owners of car businesses tell me it's a non-for-profit anyway, so I mean. Thanks.
Are you okay?
Yeah. Just want to make sure I didn't get lost, I'll be responsible. Back to the days of three at the stable. Back to the old days.
You can just see that look on his face.
Remember, I said things were very cohesive when we had one, like when we had three, so don't get me wrong.
All right, you said old days, I didn't hear you say good old days.
I'm just going to, I'm going to, you keep track, I'm getting nervous.
Law enforcement.
We might want to, we're outgunned, so just saying on this next item, whatever's worth.
Yeah, I know, they keep coming in, sidearms. Apparently we're supposed to vote yes.
There's got to be a limit on the number. Got to be done here.
Is anybody running across the street?
So don't make a run for it, huh? If I go down at the door, at least all I get's taste. It's nine forty-five. Our next item is to discuss, consider setting a date to accept bids for four Lincoln County Sheriff's Office pickup trucks. Good morning, Captain. Captain Dan Newton, Sheriff's Office.
It just doesn't have that same ring, does it?
It doesn't. Yeah.
It's not quite as poetic. Bet you're on the scene.
Morning, sir, what do we got here?
I have four pickups we want to trade in, three twenty-twenty-one Rams and one twenty-twenty Ram to trade for four current-year pickups.
Okay.
And we usually try to go out about three weeks, give the local dealers three weeks to put something together for us.
So Captain, would the twenty-fifth of this month be acceptable?
Absolutely.
Chairman, you ready for a motion?
I am.
I would make a motion that we set November twenty-fifth at ten fifteen a.m. to, to receive and consider bids for four Lincoln County Sheriff's Office pickup trucks.
Second. Motion and second, discussion. How many people do you send over when we actually have the bids?
I've already warned him, he's coming, because he's got quite the brain on him, so I need his help opening bids or comparing them.
Good, good, okay. One more question, Eric.
Rule call, vote.
Williams?
Aye.
One, Dr. Williams?
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Captain. Oh, we have another one? Oh, yeah, we do, do.
This next one is normed. I don't know if this is going to go quite as smooth or not. For me, I don't know if he has or not say that. So I'm guessing, oh, no number 16. I thought that meant number 60, but no 60.
She wanted to know so the staff knew that there was not a 60 to hunt for. Didn't, wasn't created.
Cheryl only got interrupted 312 times on Friday.
Well, if you stop letting people do that here, you're going to interrupt them.
Today is 5 o'clock. It's the last time.
You've got pretty good lines, haven't you?
Like, we did 312 voters alone on Friday. Just get, not the calendar, that didn't count.
How many?
Came back to the drop box and marriage licenses. It was crazy.
So they do have till 5 today?
5 today, yeah.
Sounds like that's a national trend, is really low.
This is the most we've ever had. We're up by about 2,000 already.
Bah, I'm back for the old days.
It's kind of like having two elections. It's like having, had the mail election and an interesting one at the same time. It's challenging.
It's 9:50. Our next item is to discuss, consider the purchase of a spray truck for the Lincoln County Noxious Weeds Department. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Thank you, sir.
Todd Hernan, Lincoln Weed Superintendent.
Before you guys, this is the numbers on trucks that I received. Put it to my weed board and they recommended either the Ford F-250 or the F-350 from Bill Summers.
I'm surprised there really isn't more difference in cost.
No, yeah. And it's going to be replacing a 2006 Silverado 3500 duly. And we'll be using it to do, pull the trailer and spray truck, but with the extra weight, the towing capacity on the F-350 is quite a bit more than the F-250 and a lot more than the Chevy 2500s.
Are you trading in the old bid or selling it?
Trading it in.
You're trading it in?
Yep.
Okay, so. I see.
Yeah, that's after trade.
The right-handed column is net after trade.
Yep.
You like the five-year, 60K warranty? Is that one of the reasons?
Yeah, yeah, the warranty is a big, the Chevys have a three-year warranty with the optional to purchase extended warranties. And they range in prices depending on what you want.
Todd, did you visit with Tyler to make sure we were in compliance with the bidding process?
Yes. Under 50.
And your board recommended which one of the?
Either one of the Fords.
Any particular, the warranty being the main reason?
Yeah.
So they recommended the 350, right?
Yeah.
Just to clarify for me and the record, you did make a bid to secure three bids?
Yes, yeah, I didn't get bid back from Janssen's.
Okay, gentlemen. I would entertain a motion. I know where I'm leaning. The board probably looked at it, discussed it, so.
For the record, Todd, I will need your original bid stuff from the auditors.
Okay.
I mean, I need it, sorry.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, considering the recommendations from the weed board, I will make a motion that we authorize Todd Hernan, the weed department Chairman, Superintendent, I'm in trouble coming up with the word, to purchase the 2024 Ford Super Duty F-350 for the net price of $44,786.57.
In a second, I have a question, Chairman. Does that as a duly?
No.
It is not a duly?
It is not a duly. It's replacing a duly.
Okay. Is the reason you're going away from duly? Because I've always had good luck with duels for stability and not getting stuck and easier on frames and easier.
Yeah, and that's why I, me, I was going with the F-350 because it has heavier duty, everything to make up for that duly.
Right. That makes, that does make sense to me.
And cheaper on tires.
Cheaper on tires, yeah. Okay, that's the only question I have. Thank you.
All right. Rule call, vote.
What, Eric?
Aye.
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 Thank you, guys, Todd.
Thanks, Todd. Everybody gets a truck.
We don't need, we don't need that. What's that? She really is.
Yes, and I don't know.
She's very, very positive.
I think yes and yes, probably.
It's a question for the Chairman.
Could you or Kami contact her? No, I don't. Thank you.
No, but you're right. Why would I? It's 10 o'clock. Next agenda item is a presentation of the 2023-2024 Visit North Platt Audit. Morning, ladies.
I'm going to pass out these first before I forget.
Thank you.
Do commissioners that aren't here, don't read the slides.
Please do, yeah. Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm Lisa Burke, Executive Director for Visit North Platt.
I'm Tom Wolfke. I'm Board Chairman of Visit North Platt.
Yes. Tom is our newly elected, as of July 1, Ford Chair, so.
Came in late, Tom. Came to the reorganization meeting late.
Yeah, that, yeah, well, I drew the short straw.
But as was noted at our last meeting, does a really great job with combing his hair and keeping it trimmed.
Thank you. Now that it's back, it's nice to have some hair to comb. Thank you.
Yes. So I just presented to you copies of this year's fiscal year audit, 2022-2024. RJ Meyer does that. We've contracted them for three years to do it. And as you will see, as you flip through that, they found no irregularities within our audit for this year, so glad to see that. If you guys have any questions that you want to ask about the audit that's in front of you.
Lisa, I've seen this previously and I had no questions then and I still have no questions. Very well done.
Give us a highlight of your last year, Lisa.
The last, our fiscal year ended as yours does, the end of June, and we ended the fiscal year up with lodging tax receipts about 5%. That totals about $61,000. Right now, calendar year, we're tracking just a little bit down, 2%, which is about $20,000, so it's not a dramatic change, but with an election year and the economy the way it is, I guess I'm not too concerned with those being down just a little bit with our lodging tax. Everything else, people are watching their dollars and not spending money like they were previous years coming out of COVID. And they always do that in election year. They kind of watch their pennies and don't spend as much money on traveling and those type of things. So I think we've got, we have four more year, or excuse me, four more months left for the year-end fiscal year, so those months are looking really good. We've got a lacrosse event coming up here, the 23rd and 24th of November at Centennial Park. Lacrosse is probably kind of new for you guys to hear that we're bringing to North Platt, but we're bringing in some groups out of Denver, Kansas City, and Omaha to meet in North Platt because we're right in the middle for them to do that, so. This last year, we've always do promotional grants and improvement fund grants. We granted out about 20, we budget $200,000 to grant out in promotional fund grants every year. We go through almost all of that. A lot of our outline communities jump on those dollars and let us help them promote their attractions and their festivals. Most of them, it's their festivals like Brady Days and the Sutherland Rodeo. They come to us every year. And our improvement fund grant, we do that once a year. Of course, the Lincoln County Historical Museum is one of those foundational, very important attractions to Visit North Platt and to promote our history here in Lincoln County, and we always gratefully give them what they need to help maintain that facility out there, so. That's just kind of a quick, what we've done in this past year. We're focusing a lot more on sporting events, bringing in events to North Platt, plus doing the foundational things that we've done before with bus groups and such, but that's been a lot of our focus this last year, so.
So, Lisa, part of the process, apparently, I'm just perusing this for the first time, but you have to track and currently are successfully tracking funds that come in that, to quote it, says assets without donor restrictions and those with donor restrictions. Is that, that's just something that's typical of the organization?
Right.
You have to track that ongoing.
Yes.
I see that they may know that.
Yes.
Apparently, that's been done well.
Yes.
From what I'm reading here.
Yes.
Good to know, good to know. And I, since you brought up the Historical Museum, I don't think I'm the only one who feels very strongly that those kind of organizations need your funding support.
Yes, they do.
Very pleased to see that your board is doing that.
Yeah, we think that Jim Griffin does a great job out there.
Absolutely does.
And promoting the history here of North Platt. And, you know, in promoting the history here of North Platte and in Lincoln County.
Yeah, the more you can enhance that facility, you already know this preaching is acquired.
Yes.
The better the attraction becomes and more repetitiveness occurs with people coming back and sharing that experience with their friends.
That is, you know, one of the treasures of Lincoln County, and that board is, you know, a hands-on working board. They work alongside Jim Griffin. So they're 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 very vested in that facility, as we are, to make sure things things are happening out there. They're, you know, in the process of working on expanding that, as you guys have you guys know, to do canteen exhibits and build on.
Many years ago, before Commissioner Woodruff and I were around, of course, our chairman was, but you'll probably remember how supportive Tom Kennedy was to seeing more of these funds spent local with improvements to tourist attractions. And I think kudos to him for his foresight, to to vision, to see that. You know, he was he seemed motivated to make sure we were doing that when he was his time on the board. And I remember having conversations about that. So.
It's very much part of this board's ma major focus is that we
Yes.
grant out dollars every year for bricks and mortar. This last year, we did $2.5 million to the, you know, to the city for the recreation center, which is, you know, something that everyone in the county can use. And it will bring in a lot of dollars to this community, tax dollars, to help increase.
Right.
You know, that visibility and being able good partners with them, too, has been very important with us because they've got the facilities and we just need to bring in more more events.
More traffic.
Yep.
Right. With those improvements, I mean, we will be able to attract more sporting events and and those kind of major regional and even national events that we can attract here in Lincoln County.
The swimming pool, actually, that that they have built is will be the biggest in probably in this midwestern of the United States.
Wow.
So USA Polo is knocking on my door every other day, wanting to know if they could come and help us design it. And I'm like, it's already done. They want they want to use that facility really bad. So.
That's that's exciting.
It is. There's a lot, a lot of things that, because we're so centrally located, that we can tap into. So we're working on that. So.
Nice.
Yeah, bricks and mortar projects have as soon as the the state changed the parameters on how we on that lodging tax, those funds that we could use them for bricks and mortar, you know, our office has been very upfront and pushed it very hard to our local entities. The outside, the the small villages get emails from us quarterly, you know, reminding them that we have these promotional grants and we have that improvement fund grant. So if you are doing anything, whether it's a, you know, Veterans Memorial or updating your your baseball fields or what, we do have funds available.
Yeah, that's great.
We've worked with almost all of them on something, which is really cool.
Okay. Well, good job, guys. I have no questions. Appreciate the update. Keep up the good work.
All right. We'll see you in a few months.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes.
I wonder if there's somebody at the table would like to address this next item?
Yeah, it's me. I'd like to table it.
Oh, just table it?
If you would, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, sure. Okay.
Two of the three commissioners that I've not chatted about with this are gone.
Okay.
It seems like I should have a discussion with the full.
Very good. I appreciate that. Thank you. We will table till a later meeting, the discussion on the General Assistance and Medical Assistance update.
I'm just looking forward to railroad that through.
I was, too. We got what we need.
Well, I can't let three month board just railroad something through.
Good, good call. Good call. Not that it's going to be controversial, I don't think. You never know.
Who is that person over there now? Since it's HHS? I don't know.
I don't want to prove life over there, so.
Yeah, it's hard to hard to get a response out of that.
I was kind of hoping you do.
No, I know who it used to be, but she's not there. I mean, she's still there, but it's not. I'll have to look at that. My email's drained. It was Jade from Ezy. Holly Andrews? Yes, Holly Andrews. But I don't know if she's still there even.
I have not heard a peep from anyone in that state department, and I don't know what they're doing.
There's a lot of things that needed to be updated.
That's what they think.
Well, yeah.
Well, if you're going to talk about this.
I think it's probably your copy. Does this kid's copy?
Yes.
May I get a copy?
Yes.
Okay, never mind.
I'll do that through.
Thank you for tabling that. I'm a minute short.
Take your picture. Oh, I got one. I hope this is the day I show up with news, too.
We have about seven, eight minutes till our next item. I think we'll take a five-minute recess.
Okay.
All right. Back here at 10:18. It is. Captain, you can come up. I'm kind of waiting for another individual.
I thought you said 9:19. Well, I didn't know I set my watch this night.
It's 10:20. Our next item is to discuss and consider setting a date to accept bids on two new half-ton trucks for the Lincoln County Department of Roads. Morning.
Morning. Jason Schultz, Lincoln County Highway Superintendent.
Brennan Blots, Lincoln County Deputy Highway Superintendent.
Ah, so we're looking to set a bid date for two half-ton long bed trucks that will complete our pickup acquisitions for this year.
You know, my only question is, I'm not sure what the trucks are going to be used for. But, you know, obviously, the eight-foot bed, I think, is important. But are they ever going to haul anything that we would need, maybe a three-quarter ton? That's that's my question.
No, we have.
suspension at all?
These trucks would be used for just some of our remote areas that really don't do any towing. And we have quite a few, I guess, three-quarter ton and larger trucks in our fleet right now that we didn't feel the need we needed to.
Who would be using these trucks?
Like now, we have a pickup that goes from Sutherland to Wallace every day.
And does what?
A blade man, and he just just commuting, you know? He doesn't. He's in a three-quarter ton now, but that'd be a good home for something more efficient.
Okay, so his route's down at Wallace. Is that what you're saying? And it's for commuting back and forth?
Yeah.
And the other one?
The other one would be replacing a current half-ton long bed truck that we have down in the Wellfleet area.
Okay.
Just for those two gentlemen down there on that on those routes.
Okay. The only question I have.
So you're going to probably identify that you don't need a maybe a V8 in these or for fuel efficiency or what are you gonna or how are you going to approach that?
Yeah, and I think anymore, we were going to spec it as having V6 or V8.
Okay.
Because a lot of the trucks these days, they're really getting away from the V8s, especially in the halftons. And we found good luck with the V6s we have, and they get a lot better mileage and seem to be just fine on power. So.
Did you have a date in mind?
About November 25.
November 25 at 10:00 AM. Yes.
Isn't that funny how that guy always comes up with those dates? We can count on you, Kent.
He's sitting in the right seat.
That's right.
Chairman, if you if you wish, I would make a motion to set November 25 at 10:00 AM to receive and consider bids for two new half-ton pickup trucks for the Lincoln County Department of Roads.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please, Tammy.
Williams.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Hugh Wayne.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, Captain Dan, you're not the only one asking for pickups.
Notice since you got notice since you got promoted, we didn't even harass you about wanting to spend money. Did you note that? Didn't think it was right to pass on a captain.
So you don't, it's up to you all. You're so used to it.
Okay, our next item is for a closed session. I think we do have today.
Something changed. Someone would take us into a closed session to discuss purchase of real estate.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we go into closed session to discuss the purchase of real estate. Who else remaining in the room? The four board members, Tyler Volkmer.
That's.
And that's it? Okay.
I second that motion. A motion and a second discussion. Roll call.
Ruler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Hugh Wayne.
Aye.
Say, guys. Joe, do you want to restate why we're going into a closed session?
Nobody will. We'll now be going into closed session to discuss potential or the purchase of real estate. Those remaining in the room will be the four board members and Attorney Tyler Volkmer from the County Attorney's Office.
We'll turn on our little thing, we'll wait till we get on the line. Okay, I would entertain a motion to go back into open session.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion at 11:05 we go back into open session.
Second.
Motion and second. Roll call vote.
Order.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Lohr.
Aye.
DeWitt.
Aye. Let's see, what have we had for our next agenda item? Any here from elected officials, department heads or their representatives, Commissioner reports, any Commissioner who wish to give a report.
I don't know if I have a report for you, but the agency on aging is struggling with the Medicare Advantage fiasco that everybody is suffering from that Senator Jacobson to his credit has been sounding the alarm for months. They've got a whole lot of folks in the community that are on that program and this hospital, and they're not alone, cannot afford that program. It's fifty cents on the dollar. And this hospital, and they're not alone, cannot afford that program. It's 50 cents on the dollar reimbursement. And there's a reason, as Senator Jacobson said, there's a reason you weren't paying a premium, because you're not getting anything back. And it's just a sad situation for a lot of our seniors in the community. And agency on aging is doing everything they can to help coach everybody through their re-enrollment process and give them some options to what they can do for their Medicare supplement, but...
It's not pretty.
It is not. It is not.
I'm right in the middle of it.
Yeah, it's a terrible scenario.
We have learned through a family member that switching back, you know, because that's what all of the information says, switch back to regular Medicare, is not that easy if you have had medical issues in the meantime. And so we're...
Well, regular Medicare, traditional Medicare is a given. It's the supplement.
Supplement.
That costs extra.
Yeah.
Substantially.
So, we have a board member on region two that's from McCook, and he and his wife got caught in this thing. And he was really quite vocal against our local hospital, Great Plains, for not accepting it, saying that we were the only hospital in the state that didn't accept it, which I don't know if is true or not, I don't know anything about it. So he says now we have to go to, I don't know if he went Carney or somewhere else to get our treatment, whether that it's not as close to North Platte. But to, you're right, to the senators, you know, that for the last year, they've been saying that. If I didn't know better and missed one of the earlier announcements, I would have think, geez, Medicare Advantage is the greatest thing in the world. I get all of these things and just don't have to pay anything for it. Why wouldn't I take it?
Yeah, I've had a number of folks ask me, where do I go for help? They, you know, they didn't know that avenue was offered up. I wouldn't know, except for all the years my mother had their assistance on her Medicare program. And they just did a tremendous job over there. And people don't know that that asset's there. We probably need to do a better job of promoting them throughout the year. But they are literally booked up, they're trying to accommodate as many folks as they can on the re-enrollment process and help them as best they can. Sometimes, as you say, Jerry, there's not, there's not good options. But it's created quite a mess for our seniors.
So Commissioner Williams, as long as a person is on Medicare, they can go to the area on aging?
They can.
And they will help them?
They...
Good to know. I did not know that.
Except they're, you know, anybody over 60, but they're literally booked.
Yeah.
Now, they can direct you to a phone consultation, and that's, and they're glad to do that. They would do that for anyone.
And Medicare dot care will help you get to some of those places.
That's correct.
I will give a quick report on the crime commission. I guess the one thing I noted that came out of there is the crime commission has funded their first alcohol detox drug hold facility. And it's only for a short-term stay to keep EPCs out of our hospitals. Unfortunately, it wasn't North Platte, I think, I don't know if it's Grand Island, Carney, or somewhere down there. But at least the crime commission realizes there is a problem, is putting a little more money towards it. And if they can find some more federal money, we'll try to get some of those others out there. Because all across the state, law enforcement is saying, you know, we've got these EPCs, I mean, it's serious, we're going to do something, they're going to harm themselves. There's nowhere we can get them. We can't even drive them 200, 300 miles and get them into somebody because there are no beds. So, so much on that. Anything else from anybody else?
I did attend the award ceremony at Dr. Betcher's office. It was short and emotional. And he's doing great work for our veterans in trying to get some other dentists to join him in that. So, kudos, kudos to Dr. Betcher for stepping up and filling that need in our community.
Super.